... presentations and our comments. I can tell you, you know, everybody has a bad day now and then in terms of the presentations they give. These are human beings that come before us. And if there are substantive, now if there is substantive information withheld from us, that's really a serious matter. If there are questions that can't be answered when they're asked, that's a serious matter. And certainly, we would all like our presentations to be more, more polished. I don't know about you. I go home from practically every meeting thinking, "Oh, if I had just said," or "I wish I hadn't said that." My God, what was I thinking? And, you know, that's, that's kind of a universal experience. So I would just like the discussion to maybe be balanced a little bit. You know, we could do a little better job ourselves sometimes, I think, of preparing our comments. And while the criticism is reasonable and our frustration is real, you know, I think that there ought to be some balance to the discussion. I appreciate what the staff does most of the time. And these are difficult jobs that we have here. And, you know, I just think that there ought to be some balance in weighing and discussing this.
Right. And just let me say briefly, too, before I call the question as resolution, it is absolutely imperative, too, that when we, when board members request information, that they read the information. I can't stress that enough. I mean, this is not, it's very important that we all do our part, and I'm talking to my colleagues now, that we request something that we actually read, even if it means staying up late until 2:00 in the morning. Very important. Anything else on Resolutions 372? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolution 372, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
We have one no. And I'm sure the superintendent will be giving us an update by way of his weekly letter as this program gets off the ground on the movement of it. That concludes the resolution portion of this meeting. We have two items under unfinished business. We discussed these items at two previous board meetings. However, I will entertain any other discussion that we want to have. We had a long conversation last board meeting about the code of conduct and also a long conversation last meeting about the responsible bidder policy. The first item, the code of conduct, Commissioner Brennan, it came out of your committee, so if there are any other comments you want to make, I know you spoke last meeting to this, but if you want to...
We discussed this at great length. I'd just be interested in other people's comments. I've had more than enough to say about it over the course of the past year. And we discussed it at some length, I think, at the last meeting, where I guess I raised again the question of what we were doing to see that there was uniform enforcement of our standards and rules.
Commissioner Powell?
Point of order, we have in fact voted on.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's true, too.
Yeah, so I don't know, yes, I don't know if there's any other, we have voted on the code of conduct, but I don't know if there's any other discussion that anyone wanted to have on it. Okay, good. Other than follow the code of conduct, it goes for board members also. I'm sorry, I have to rule you out of order. You have to, because, you know, we're in the midst of a meeting, but if you did have a question, please feel free to write it down. You can give it to the clerk, and maybe she can answer it for you. The next item on the agenda is the responsible bidder policy. Questions or comments around the responsible bidder policy? We discussed this also at the last meeting, and I believe we have voted on it already. Does anyone else have anything else? Commissioner White?
Yep. First of all, Commissioner Brennan wants to call this my resolution, but in fact...
We're going to change the title to the Van White...
Van's Law, yes.
... related in legal English language.
No, no, no. I didn't write this, of course. We had the able work of the folks from the legal department, and I want to thank counsel for, and her staff. Mr. King, I think, was responsible for this before counsel got here. So I want to thank them for doing that. But I do want to thank Commissioner Brennan for, as he's done on a number of occasions, shepherding important policy through his committee. I know it is not an easy task, because his committee seems to be the spoke hub of all the important pieces of board policy that come before this entire body. So, thank you, Commissioner Brennan. And I do want to note, because I don't think this moment should pass unnoticed, that the previous responsible bidder policy, 67225, required that our, the district financial officer take into account, for example, OSHA violations, any bidder who had, for example, violations of environmental conservation law had to be examined, anybody who had a criminal conviction had to be examined with respect to whether they were responsible bidder. But now, as a result of the vote a few minutes ago, we now also require that anybody who has had an adverse determination or administrative ruling issued against them by the EEOC or the Human Rights Division also would be examined with respect to whether they're responsible bidder. This is a significant step for this community. We're now saying, if you violate state or federal civil rights or human rights laws, you cannot be the beneficiary of district largess, or at least not until we are satisfied that you're no longer violating those important laws that we hold so sacred. So I do think it's important, even though we voted on it as now board policy, I think it's important that we recognize the good work that we do and how serious we are about our responsibility. So thank you, Commissioner Brennan, and thank you for the colleagues who have voted on this amendment unanimously.
Thank you, Vice President and, Mr. Vice President and colleagues. A member of our audience asked a very good question. She asked if the code of conduct was the same as the discipline, discipline policy that the superintendent rolled out. And I would say, and my answer was, no, they're not the same. This guides how it's supposed to be carried out. This is, I see this more so as a superintendent's directives on how we're supposed to carry this out. It's almost after legislation is passed, how that legislation should be implemented, and that's what governs that. Anything else on code of conduct or responsible bidder before we move to new business? Okay. Under new business, we have board goals. As you all may know, the Board Governance Committee convened at least two meetings and also a retreat to discuss board goals. You have those in front of you. Commissioner Elliott, anything you want to say on board goals?
Yeah, let me just thank the board for coming together on some Saturday mornings and, and working on the board goals. And what the board attempted to do was align our goals with the superintendent's goals. And we have three areas of focus: instructional, operational, stakeholder connection, and satisfaction. Under instructional alignment, we have as, as goals, support the work of closing the achievement gap among subgroups, increase post-secondary readiness, decrease the number of suspensions, push for increase in this year's graduation rate. Under operational excellence, we have advocate and monitor MWB goals and strategy, involvement in the oversight and finances and capital improvement processes, advocate for the district's long-range facilities plans as it relates to the facilities modernization project, and support the hiring and evaluation of the best qualified staff. Under stakeholder connection and satisfaction, our goals are demand a customer-focused culture, support the development of the Rochester Surround Care Community Corporation, create and sustain partnerships, and support parent participation.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. And I do, again, just want to thank my colleagues. A lot of you in the audience may not know the board members as well as the superintendent for really coming on Saturday mornings, when they could be with their families, relaxing, taking a day off, enjoying their days off from work, but really coming here brightening early in the morning to hash out these goals. So, thank you, colleagues. Any, can I have a motion to accept our board goals for the year?
Show move.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any other questions or comments around the board goals?
Just one question.
Yes.
When you say for the year, does that mean, meaning...
School year.
School year is what I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, we should say for the year. Yeah, that's a good question. Do we mean for the year or for the school year?
Well, the conversation in the, in the meetings were that we do it based on the school year.
Yeah.
From September through July, through August, excuse me.
So for the school year? Good question. Student representative?
As far as the student achievement, I have...
If, yeah, if, yeah, if you have some goals, if you have some areas around it that you want to hash out, please feel free to definitely put them in writing and let the superintendent and the board know. I will ask you at the next board meeting exactly your thoughts around that, so be prepared for that, okay? All right.
President Evans, are you going to attend the Board Governance Committee meeting on Monday?
I know I was...
Oh, I thought you had asked about attending that. If you are going to attend, let me just say that you can also bring those goals to that, that meeting.
When is that?
Monday.
October 27th, Monday.
Monday. Is it 5:30?
6:00.
6:00. Mm-hmm. And we'd love to hear your thoughts about, around it at the next board meeting. Okay? All those in favor of board goals, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our board goes past. Also, point of personal privilege, Commissioner Elliott.
Thank you, President Evans. There are a couple of things, a couple of other meetings that I attended that I wanted to share with my colleagues and with, and with the public. I was a panel member at Nazareth Urban Institute on education, and there are, a part of that panel, there were a number of questions, about four questions that we were to address. However, we only got to one question. It was a conference that dealt with Vivian Paley's book, White Teachers. And the one question that it took, you know, two hours for us to really, we really got into the question was, "How do teachers get to know thyself?" So there were a lot of questions in terms of biases, prejudices, learning styles, and how do, how does a teacher adjust who they are to be able to achieve academic excellence in, in the classroom? Members of that panel included Carlos Cabalada, who's the City's Economic Development Commissioner. He was also a former New York State Regent, a former superintendent for our district, Bill Calla. Vivian Paley was also a part of that panel, as well as our own Michelle Hancock, who participated in that. It was a very, very intense kind of, of session, a small session, but very, very intense. The next program that I attended, I did go out to the Careers in Construction that was held today. And when I first walked in the door, I knew that construction was not my thing, but there were 1,300 students in attendance. I actually happened to speak to about five of the young men who indicated, President Evans, that they thought that the work was too hard for them. But I also got an opportunity to speak to, went to one of the tables, a person by the name of Tom Maers, who represents the Empire State Regional Council of Carpenters, along with a former Edison graduate by the name of Carlos. And I shared with them the comments that were made by those students. And the former Edison student responded by saying, "Well, yeah, it is hard at first, but they have to get trained." And so, once they get trained, they will know how to, you know, they operate machinery and what have you. He indicated, though, it's still hard work, but the training will help them to, to be able to do their job effectively. He also, and I will make sure that my colleagues get a copy of this, gave me a grid that, that that's entitled, "Where do you want to be in 10 years?" And what it shows is that in the apprentice one phase, you begin to make $12.49 an hour as a base rate, but in total, about $19. And then over 10 years, you can get to up to a base rate of about $25 an hour. With a total compensation package, that's about $40 an hour. And so, they don't have to, they only pay, you know, something like 36 cents per hour in apprenticeship training, and dues are like $1.87 per hour for dues. And he compared the kind of money that a student could make as a journeyman to those of us who have graduated from college and got student loans that we have to pay. And I suggested that maybe, President Evans, we can have the Empire State Regional Council of Carpenters to do a presentation so that we know the kinds of opportunities that our young people who may be interested in building trains that can be, can participate in. It's a lot of money that's involved in that. So I will pass this along so we can take a look at it, because this makes it much more attractive, the amount of money that they are, that they are paying. And then, lastly, I want to bring up the Resolution 139 and Compass, and talk about, talk about that. I was disappointed that it was brought to the full board for approval, particularly because it was tabled. And, President Evans, it was tabled for the same reasons that Commissioner White just enunciated. We did not get sufficient information in the finance meeting. The person who's a champion of it was not there. So the person who was there to represent this particular resolution didn't have any of the answers. So we tabled it. And the district, including the finance director, was trying to convince us that it had to be passed, and it had to be passed. And my decision was that it, we tabled it. We did not have the information. And the fact is that under former Superintendent Calla, we had spent $1 million with Encompass, and we didn't have any of the results. We did get the results after the fact, or got some information after the fact. The problem with that is, is you cannot vet it in committee, where you can really have some engagement or conversation around the results. I come back and see that the board approved it. So that says to me that the superintendent, along with the president, had this thing moved out of committee. The concern I have with that is, is that it opens us up to the possibility of ineffective use of resources, impropriety, and a lack, and lack of sound business practices. The district and the superintendent cannot just feel that they can just circumvent democratic principles, and that's what I feel that happened. We had, we did not have the correct information, but it got passed anyway. And that is, in my view, a circumvention of board processes and of a democratic process. We didn't get the information. And it seems, and to me, we are not able to do our due diligence as elected officials who has an oversight responsibility. And the, and the fact is that we'd given them $1 million under Superintendent Calla. We're giving them $850,000 approximately, and we didn't get a chance to ask questions about this particular resolution. And so, for the record, I want to put it on the table that that was tabled, and it got moved out without us having an opportunity, those of us in the finance committee, to be able to ask the kinds of questions in that form. And so I have an issue with that, and I just want it to be noted for the record. Thank you.
I also want something to be noted for the record and put in the minutes also. Number one, I want all of my colleagues to understand something very clearly. Committees have absolutely no authority over any resolutions that come through them. They can come with an advisory opinion, they can come with an advisory vote, but the votes and the discussions on any piece of legislation or resolution that comes has to take place here, similar to what we did tonight with the Piercing Learning Center Resolution. So all of those conversations have to take place here, and they can be voted on here. One of the, one of the things I noticed when I first got to this board was committee chairs would often play this game of thinking that they had exercise authority that they didn't have and try to bottle up resolutions that were meant to come through the full board. The authority rests not with an individual committee or with an individual board member, but with this entire board. Secondly, as prescribed in the bylaws, the president of this board has the ability to set the agenda and add to it whatever he sees fit, and, and it's passed or considered only by four votes of the board. So it's the board that makes the ultimate decision on whether or not something is passed, not a committee or not an individual. And that was what happened with Encompass. And that's what happened when we passed Encompass two months ago. So I would just, Commissioner Elliott, I would just note that from the record, from my end, because I want to make it clear that no laws or no rules, at least not from the bylaws that I read, were violated. And if that was the case, I would not have had that discussion on Encompass at the board, and I believe it passed unanimously. Commissioner Powell?
First, I'd like to remind everyone that the camera's off. We've gone past our two hours, so we're not broadcasting on, on the city cable channel. So what we're doing here is airing our dirty laundry in front of the district staff. Unfortunately, that genie is already out of the bottle. The argument has already been laid forth.
President Evans?
But to that, I think I have the floor. But to that, I do want to add a couple of points. Number one, the committee on that particular date consisted of two people, only a quorum. And the argument that the committee lacked information is one perspective from one of the two persons present. I was personally fully prepared to vote yes for it. I voted to table as a courtesy. It could just as easily, I could have just as easily voted not to table, which would have forced a vote of one to, one and one, and therefore, the matter would have come through the committee with no recommendation. That would have been the ultimate outcome had I not voted with Commissioner Elliott to table that resolution. There are really two worldviews being played out here. Commissioner Elliott sees things one way. I, as the other member of the committee, see things very differently, and there is absolutely no reason why the president of the board should be chastised for doing that which is within his right and his privilege in our bylaws.
President Evans?
Commissioner Elliott, and then I really want to wrap up this discussion, because we do have seven speakers.
Very well, very well. See, the issue is not about whether or not we follow the law. The issue is, are we doing the right thing by our community, by our taxpayers? And we did not get the information in a form by which I, as a board member, as an elected official, can represent this community and say that I have the information that I need in order to vote properly on this resolution. Laws may have been followed. For me, that's not the issue. The issue is, are we doing the right thing by giving an opportunity for discussion of this particular item? Now, here again, it is, it is back on the district, they bring it late. And so we are rushed to push it. We're rushed, rushed to vote on it. The fact of the matter is, is that, President Evans, you should have pushed back on the superintendent and say no, because the committee didn't get a chance to vet it.
Commissioner, President.
And so, and so that's where the issue become. Now, let me have it said that, the reason that I believe that the district felt comfortable in doing that was because we circumvented our own board process when we, when we brought up the student achievement thing, and didn't take that through the right process. So in my view, you know, the district feels that they can just, it doesn't matter. We could just, we could circumvent the process. I'll just talk to the president. President Evans, I just believe respectfully, I say this, it should have come back where we can have more conversation in the finance committee. Thank you.
I'll just say respectfully, the conversation took, took place here where it should take place, here.
One final comment, if I could, President Evans.
Yes, before I close this.
I just have to take issue with the idea that the administration took advantage of the board. The fact is that this, the Encompass project was approved by this board when we approved our budget. The questions that were being asked about its efficacy were premature by all rights. The time for the Encompass project to present validation of its achievement is at the end of the cycle, when they're asking for the next program-based budgeting renewal. We have, this is a project that's governed by program-based budgeting. The time, certainly, there's a point in time when we are reviewing our budget that we have to make a decision as to whether a program lives up to its expectations or not. Our, our finance committee was not that time, and the, and the administration acted appropriately to assume that it could go ahead with this, primarily because the board had already said yes during our budget deliberation process. The, really, this same finance committee meeting had been postponed three times. And no time prior to any of the three committee meetings were any questions about Encompass submitted, either to the committee chair or to the staff. In other words, the committees, the questions at committee were gotcha questions.
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
The opportunity, it may not have been the intent, but when you withhold your questions and not present them so that the staff can submit answers in writing...
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
Prior to the committee meeting, they translate, for all practical purposes...
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
Okay. Thank you. This conversation is now closed. Because I'm going to, I'm going to move to, 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 to questions to our, to our distinguished community who's waited so long to be able to speak to us. So we'll move to that. Our, each speaker will have three minutes, if you can come up to the podium. The first speaker is Mercedes Vasquez Simmons, and you will have three minutes. Mercedes, are you here? Come on up. Thank you for your patience. No, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizar, Commissioner Malik Evans, and members of the board. As a parent with children attending the city schools and as a graduate of the city school system, I'm deeply concerned about the issues within the district concerning my Latino Mr. White, you noted earlier that Latinos, Latino children account for 21% of the student population. While I was deeply saddened to find out that 38% of them were only, were only 38% were graduating. Many of the Latino student, students, English language learners, and typically need special education. We'll go back to the graduation rate. Once again, 38% of 21% are, are graduating. That's alarming, that 62% are dropping out.
That's not true.
Students who are dropping out fall behind on math and social studies. And it's been noted that their skillset, their skills are that of a 13-year-old. Now, just think about that. These are the children who are entering our society. Superintendent, Superintendent Bizar, members of the board, it seems to me that my Latino students are left behind. As a parent, I'm requesting that, that the district make an effort to ensure that our children have the same opportunity to succeed as the other children. I don't feel that this has been the case, and my kids are suffering. I recommend stronger academic assessments for their strength, strengths and weaknesses, along with rigorous tutoring, to help the children move to the next level. I encourage that proper resources be given to help with homework and also ensure that English language learners, students learn current material as you move forward. And Ms. Elliott, I will, I'll have to quote you, because I thought it was, you're passionate, and I certainly feel that passionate with my students, when you, when you said, "Money better not be an issue when it comes to our children." It's our responsibility to advocate for our children and to ensure that all of our children are treated equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez Simmons. Mr. Charlie Richardson?
That's my best I can offer.
All of us, Charles.
Vice President White? Other commissioners?
President Evans, Vice President White, other commissioners, and Mr. Bizard. Unfortunately, Mr. Los, who is an outstanding youth, probably had to catch the bus home. I want to speak to you tonight, again, not complaining, but this is the third year that I have been here speaking on this piece. And I'm hearing it tonight, and I hear it a lot on the boards and that, that, you know, we are doing the best that we can. And in the community, as some of the board members feel, Mr. Bizard is really doing his job, it's just not enough of him yet, because there's too many jobs to be done. But one of the things that we need to do to work together is, we found out from the youth, and you got the report last month that Mr. Los bought in, remember that? Did anybody get a chance to read it? What a wonderful piece put together by our youth. Well, we're finding out that if kids are taught to what they are interested in, they may stay in school longer versus teaching to the tests. But we don't know in this school district, okay, what the kids want to do. I was out at that Edison, and I was really astounded at the Edison booth that they had. That fascinated me. We just don't have enough of that around. But if you take the sheet, it's a white sheet. I'm not going to go over everything here, but this white sheet should have been in the back. You'll see all the schools that are listed on here. This program has been done, and I didn't talk about the elementary school one, you can read it later, but this other one has been done in the suburbs for years. They get about a 93% return in a city school district for the third year, although it did get a little bit better this year. Please look at the schools and our percentage of returns that we get, because the youth aren't getting to fill them out. The principals don't believe in it, the counselors don't believe in it, and a lot of the teachers don't believe in it. It's just another piece of paper. Well, it's an easy one to fill out in the report that comes back, that we can identify what these kids want to do. And what we're saying is, and unfortunately, Jim had to leave, I'd ask him to come in and really address with it. He's ahead of it. And there's companies out there that want these explorer units for 14- to 20-year-olds. But why can't the rest of our schools at least fill out a piece of paper, like the school without walls? You'll see they're at 81%, okay? Versus we have the Daniel Rochester Community School, zero. And they're all in the 20s and 30s. If we knew what these youth wanted to do, we could help them. There are mentors out there, like the architects now, are trying to find how many architects we have, students that want to be architects in the city, so they can put them in these explorer units to help them come along. Wouldn't it be easier that if you know a kid wants to do this or drive that heavy equipment, a lot of us don't want to? And we talk to him that he's got to have math and that, he's got to be able to read blueprints and that. Would they not be interested? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim is not here, so we'll go to Glenny Williams. Is Glenny here? Okay. Is Jamie Bermudez here? Jamie?
One last thing, building hope together, all of us can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I wrote something, but after sitting here for the last two hours, I've kind of, I kind of wanted to talk about something totally different. I am, I do want to touch base on the graduation rate, especially our Latino youth. First of all, I come to you as a Latino member in the community. I also come to you as a member of a Latino agency that supports and helps Latinos and minorities across the board, and a graduate from the Rochester Public City Schools. One thing that I am noticing, as I look across this room, is that there is no voice of the youth here at all. And Superintendent Bizard said that these kids understand their, the recommendation of graduation when it comes to their, how much credits they have to graduate, and I'm here to tell you that they don't. No matter how many times you tell them, they don't know what that recommendation is. We are not giving that information to them in a way that they understand. Now, there are a couple of things that need to take place from my point of view. I work at Edison Tech out of IBA American Action League. I oversee the Brenner-Bree Program, which is the Bree Mentoring Achievement Program through the Student Support Center. And one of the things that we do is we sit down and we talk to the youth. That's the most important thing. It's fine for us to sit behind our desk and say, well, this may work and that may work, but until we are sitting with our teenagers, our youth, the ones that we are making the decisions for and listening to their voice, really, things are not going to matter. Things are not going to make a difference in to where catering to what their true needs are. First and foremost, schools are no longer just a learning institute. They are a place for them to be safe. It is a safe haven for them from all the elements of the world, okay? We have to consider that some of these teenagers are still coming from broken homes. They are out on the streets and they want to be safe. They are coming to these schools with the whole idea that someone is going to hold them accountable. Whether they act like they don't want to be held accountable, they want someone to hold them accountable. They want someone to listen, and so that's why they still come to school. We ask, how is a 21-year-old still in school and they haven't graduated? How is a 17-year-old still in school but repeating the 10th grade for the third time? Well, it's simple. They don't, they don't know how to go about getting this education, but they know that they don't want to be home or they don't want to be in the streets. So they'd rather be in a place where they can come, where someone can listen to what their needs are, where someone can come and say, well, this is the way you can go about doing it, where someone can hold them accountable, and at the end of the day, someone can give them the tools that they need for the real world. The Student Support Center is something that absolutely works, okay? We have a lot of agencies working out of there. So my question is, what is it that the agency needs to do in order for us to be able to work with you guys? Because it's an old statement that says, you know, it takes a, it takes a village to bring up a child. Well, we need to, we need to combine our forces and really concentrate on what those issues are at hand.
Thank you. Julie Clayton, is Julie here? Julie Clayton will be followed by the last speaker, Alfredo Gonzalez. Is he here? Is Alfredo here? Okay, you're the last speaker tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizard, Mr. Evans, Mr. White, everyone on the council. First of all, I want to apologize for being out of order earlier because I thought maybe it was scheduled at the wrong time, and thank you, Mr. White, or Mr. Evans, for setting me straight. I'm a school instructor with a school district. I've been teaching for 30 years, but about 20 years with the school district. I am currently an instructor with the Youth and Justice Program at the Monroe County Jail across the street. And thank you, Mr. White, for visiting us when you did a couple of months ago. Appreciate it. We have a lot of kids, a lot of adults and a lot of children with problems over there, and I teach the 16- to 20-year-olds, and it's an interesting place to work, and I'm very glad that I'm there. We have a lot of very teachers that are really concerned and good teachers over there, I think. But my concern tonight is, on October 2nd, in the Democrat Chronicle, I saw the Standards of Discipline Code that said Superintendent Bizard was going to be presenting at tonight's meeting. I don't know if you have looked at that. It was in the paper, and it said, I think it's very commendable that we want to keep the kids in school. It's definitely commendable. We want to keep kids in school. We want to educate them in the most natural way that we can. But it said here, there are five levels of offenses. The first two were minor. Level three offenses included possession of alcohol or controlled substances, assault against a non-staff member, and sexual harassment and serious fighting. The draft says that in level three and above, and above offenses, the police need to be called unless otherwise noted. And I imagine level three goes into in-school suspension. Included in level four are grand larceny, hate crimes, motor vehicle theft, and sale of controlled substances. They would necessitate parent contact, in-school suspension, and a recommendation for long-term suspension. Level five offenses include armed robbery, kidnapping, assault against district employees or possession, use, use, or sale of firearms. They receive the same treatment as level four and may result in expulsion. How many of you would like to be a teacher in those situations? Anybody raise your hand? I don't think so. Would any of you? Okay, these kids are very violent, and, okay, if they're going to stay in the school, you have to have some, some support for those teachers. I know several of the teachers. It's like, I think they need support. You can't just throw them in a situation like that and have them be successful in that situation. I just, to say one more thing, a lot of my friends who are teaching in those situations are afraid to go to work every day, and we don't want to see anything like Peter Castle happen again. I'm very concerned, and that's why I'm here tonight. I would recommend you go visit those teachers as it is right now. Go visit those ISS teachers and see what they have to say to you. A lot of things are documented as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that, oh, yeah, our last speaker, Alfredo Gonzalez. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Alfredo Gonzalez. I've been a resident of the city of Rochester since 1989, and I'm a proud parent of one student that graduated from the first class of the IB program from Magnet High School. And also, very sad to say, I'm a stepfather of a son that got lost in the system because there was no intervention. So I want to talk about the Latino student high school dropout rate, in which we are in crisis and is unacceptable as a Latino member of this community and as a citizen of this community. We cannot afford to have that continue to happen. And one of the things that really concerns me the most is that, and question that I have myself is, we talk about parent involvement all the time when it comes to issues affecting our children. But when you have one of the highest poverty rates in this community, in a Latino population, that parents have to worry about feeding the children. So we need to stop that conversation about parent involvement. It's a community involvement. Everybody has the responsibility, like Jamie said a while ago, all of us together to make this happen. Let's stop blaming the parents that do not get involved, because when I tried to get involved with my stepson, it took me five phone calls to the, to his high school until finally I showed up to demand a meeting. That's unacceptable, and I see happens every single time. So it's our system, if we want our parents involved, it's really friendly enough to get them involved. We need to ask ourselves that question. And you mentioned, Mr. Brennan, a little while ago about that, that I'm glad that you mentioned that as a policy, how we treat our parents to be involved and be engaged and be part of the solution, and how we treat them. The other part of that is, we just had the Upstate Summit second year here last Friday, and I'm telling you that right now, the cities of Albany, Amsterdam, Eureka, Buffalo, Syracuse, and Rochester, we're going to put a plan of action dealing with the high school dropout rate in every community. We need to stop the nonsense. We need to address it, and we will come to you with a plan of action to be partners to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Mr. Superintendent, you had something?
Just 30 seconds. I forgot to thank Senator Schumer for a grant. Linda, was she in Maltegan for the AP, Advanced Placement? Thank you, for Advanced Placement. We're going to keep pushing our college-going culture. Thank you. Thank you. And the last, last piece, just one, again, I don't always like to respond to speakers' questions, but we need to make sure that we understand land data, because a 38%, but it's higher than 38% for Latinos. It's lower, it's too low, I'm not arguing that, but that does not equal a 62% dropout rate. It's a four-year graduation rate. Many of our kids who are English language learners graduate in five years or six years. So, because if 40% graduate in four years, it doesn't mean 60% dropout. Point of clarification.
Thank you. Our next meeting, next business meeting will be November 20th, 2008, at 6:30 PM. We have a special board meeting this coming Tuesday at 6:15? 6 o'clock. Special board meeting this Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Motion to adjourn, please. All those in favor? All right, we stand adjourned.